Where people put their budget amount, like I'm putting a request for money for parks, that's when we'll get the opportunity to decide as a group of people whether that money should still be going into the budget to be ring fenced. Just because it's ring fenced doesn't mean it has to be spent, does it?
No.
No?
Oh, sorry.
That sort of thing.
We just have the thought.
So what I'm going to do, this part of the meeting, I'm going to hand over to, trust me to write, over to Peter and to Michael who's in the OHP. I would ask, I will only step in if things start getting unruly. Everyone will be given an opportunity to speak. Because of the nature of the budget and we want to make sure that it is covered properly, as long as people don't crack this out, I will allow people to speak more than words. But if it becomes unruly or silly, then I will put a stop on that, okay? The budget is important and we've only got an hour and 20 minutes to resolve it. And it shouldn't take that long, I don't think. Okay? Thank you.
Can I suggest that the papers table and develop an agenda paper or something?
Yes.
The agenda paper was tableled.
The yellow paper.
I suggest you actually read that through while I...
If everybody reads the yellow paper while Michael sets up his show. Turn that on, pick the power up, please. We weren't sure, we just went on today, it's not, because it was like... It's when I got a notification through from the board saying that we... I didn't even know the lights were coming down, we'd literally gone through the town, the lights were coming down, so we just left on the way. So I never looked at it. Because Michael said the same. Yeah, that's all good, it still works. Sorry, I haven't seen anything. Ah, right, okay, there we have it. Can everybody see?
So what we're doing, because we're both discussing it at the time. And then what we can do, we'll see the effect it has on income, expense of less income, which will reflect on what the council tax increase would be in cash terms and what percentage increase will be. So at the moment, it's showing a deficit of £296,770. That is expenditure less income, which would give on a band the property that would make the council tax 75.34, which would be an increase of £20.87 on the current fiscal year, which equates to an increase of 38%.
So basically, just to confirm, if we go with 38%, it's 20 something pounds the whole year, okay? Not per month.
And just to give that some context and not to attempt to trivialise it or call it funny, it's very easy to look at that and think, shock, horror, what's happening? So what I've done, just to contextualise this, I don't want to trivialise it, it actually equates, to increase actually equates to nine cups of takeaway coffee a year. Now, that's the same, I've just put that in just to draw it back, it's what we're talking about in cash terms. But that won't be the case if everything we looked at was agreed. So if we start at the top, the ones I've put in blue, these are the figures that we have from the office. And that's, I think you'd agree, that is, salaries, rent, NDR, et cetera, et cetera. Those are our costs.
Is that final con group?
Yeah. Yeah. This is college currency.
So let's start at salaries. At the moment, what we're saying is we're looking at £50,000.
Fifty thousand on salaries, yeah. So we went through these on the last meeting.
Now, if anybody's got any comments they want to make, you're going to have to raise your hand and then we'll have the lady to speak. So Martin's raised his hand already on £50,000.
Yeah, this was raised at the last meeting. We've put an advert out which basically is less money on salary. It's half of what our previous members of actually was paid annually. So I don't see how the figure of £50,000 can be the same as what it was in 2015.
How did we arrive at £50,000?
When we are...
Yeah, that's why I've got... What I'm going to do is...
I'm looking to cut these figures.
What I'm going to do, if you have a point to make, if you go, why is the salary budget as high as what it was when we got half as many staff? Let's summarise it briefly, because we've only got an hour and 20 minutes. So, Michael, can you justify why?
Because we are, just remind people, we are members, we are looking at budgets, we're not looking at orders. We're looking at projected expenditure, projected income. That's what a budget's about. Not, yes, it's a projection, okay? And to do that, we have looked at last year's budget. We have looked at the changes we currently have, because we haven't appointed anybody. And we've taken those factors into consideration. And it's the working group's recommendation that the budget has a figure of £50,000. But it is a budget, not a set in concrete, that is what will be spent. Martin, would you agree with that, Peter?
Yes, I mean, we had various working papers. And I mean, the current situation is that we've obviously got this in-between period while we're waiting for a clerk. And we, I mean, it's a question of estimating what we think realistically is going to be the figure for the current year. Yes, I mean, we can throw it back, but I mean, if you throw it back too much and we take a long time appointing another clerk, it's not going to work. So we felt it prudent to run it in that sort of figure.
And also, if I'm not very much mistaken, just to confirm, that's salaries, isn't just what people get paid? Also, national insurance, pensions, employees' contributions.
Absolutely.
Right, okay.
A 22% pension contribution. I mean, that is a dramatic figure. And of course, we have it picture expenses at the moment.
Right, Martin, you want to come back and say something on this?
Yeah, I don't want to say, but the thing is, we've had an exceptional year this year. That figure is going to be a lot higher in that box before the final one.
What, £50,000?
Yeah.
But if we budget £50,000, it can't be.
But if we take into consideration the level of starting we have now, for instance, our local clerk is cheaper, it's worse, not mine, than our previous one, there is no way that next year's budget is going to be £50,000.
Right, okay, what I'm going to do, I've got a bit messy, what I'm going to do is I'm going to look around the table, I'm going to ask for a show of hands on who wants to have £50,000 paid in salary. Okay? So we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Martin, you wouldn't agree with it? So on that principle at the moment, we'll need that £50,000, it is, all right? But I've made it known. No, no, that's fine, I'm conscious, I want to hear everyone's opinion, but I'm also, we are going, you know...
Not a time.
Rent, £12,000.
Well, you know, it's the same thing, we just round it up for a round.
It's not true, this is the...
This building, this is our rent to the Victoria ward.
I'm sorry, gentlemen, I don't know what's going on, you're 15.
Current contract is...
Done, exactly, this is coming here.
Okay, can we move on from that one? Everybody have for that, okay? I know I keep talking over Michael now, but I'm just making sure we keep moving down. So the NDR offices and toilets?
We've increased that slightly to allow for inflation. Office furniture, we've increased that, because there has been talk about replacing furniture.
Are we realistically going to replace furniture, everybody?
And the sooner the better.
Okay, right, okay.
Sorry. They just don't have to be spent.
No, no, okay. Utilities?
Again, we've increased it to inflation.
Right. Insurances?
Again, insurance, we've found, we've only spent £5,000, £6,500. We felt the budget was too high last year, we're not going to need that amount, so we've reduced that.
So the budget last year was £7,000. There's actually a reduction there on what we budgeted for the previous year. Right, okay, postage and stationery?
Well, we spent £12,500 for the 31st of tenth, so we brought in £2,000 more on realistic figure.
Yes, and that's lower than the previous year's budget? Yeah, well done.
Again, we'd tell it's only reduced it a bit, because again, we haven't spent, there's nothing else I can spend. Budget, right.
Okay, that's positive.
Turn that back a bit.
Subscriptions?
Can you tell me what the subscriptions are for?
Yes.
Yeah.
Things like ESLCC now.
Now?
On the car.
Association of Local Councils.
On the car.
Our religious society.
Yeah, thank you.
And so again, we've increased that to allow for inflation. Expensive, we've increased that considerably, because we've spent £600 almost at the 31st of tenth. The budget is already overspent, so we've increased that to make it, where we think it's more realistic, bigger. Yeah? Training, well, that, we spent virtually nothing this current year, but we do anticipate spending money on training in coming year, but not as much as the budget that we had last year.
It's a question of, is that combined with councillors and officers?
No, the question is, why, when we've not had any training, I think that's an essential thing. But we're cutting it because nobody's gone out and actually got any quotes for training. And they're just saying, let's cut it by half. I think that's one of the biggest problems for myself, I'll say myself, is that we're not trained. And we need to...
So do you want the training left at 1500 or increase it some by?
I'd like it to remain the same as the 3,000, because I don't think when you go to people like you already know that we're going to get any decent training for 1500, but you include what we will be paying for our new clerk and our assistance staff.
Joyce?
Well, we used to have Austin, whatever his name is.
Howards? Nowards, two hours.
No, stop these, these stupid comments. Austin's somebody from Nowk, that's Amnesty, who came to train us here.
Jake does it. Jake's been doing it last year, hasn't he? Last few years.
Jake has done it, yes.
Do we get to it?
But, yes, yeah, we do, but we need that person here training us.
Okay, that obviously cost more money than going over there. So the sticking point here is that Martin believes it should be 3,000. So should it be 1500 or 3,000? So first question is, do we want it to be 1500? Show of hands that it should be 1500. So we've got 1, 2, 3, 4 of us, 5 of us on 1500. Five on 1500. Those that think it should go back with the 3,000?
How about 2,000? I'm just...
Training doesn't seem to be that important.
Would, if we reach a compromise of 2,000, would that sit better?
We're just voting for...
No, no, we're not voting officially, I'm just trying to get a second check on it, to see what people feel. So...
Personally, I don't think 1,500 would be enough. But I think 3,000 is a bit too high.
2,000 then, is everybody, because I think I saw a nod there from Rich, 1, 2, 3, 4. All right, okay, let's change it to 2,000, then, please. Okay. Right, the... Oh, we lost it, we lost the block.
That puts it in there.
That's going on to 39% now. What on now? Accountancy and audit? That's what I think, that might be it. Happy to lead a council audit, 1500?
No, sorry, council audits, we've put it up a bit, okay, to allow for inflation.
Right, okay.
Because we spent 2, 4, 8, 2, 4, 8, 9 this year.
So happy with the 2, yes. The new accountancy.
Yes, yes.
Right, so council audit is 3,000, no issues, right? HR, legal expenses, which is, you're keeping it the same as the previous year?
Yeah, because we didn't know what was going to happen this year.
Okay, right. Yeah, we've, there always, and obviously there's a work going off with the neighbourhood plan and all that, we may be looking to do quite that. HR support?
That figure is still wrong, being that it's only a hundred and twenty thousand a month.
It's, it is a hundred and twenty pounds a month for HR support, is that right? Hundred a month? So it's only 1,200 a year, HR support?
But again, we've got payroll.
Payroll, how much is payroll, Austin? That's the 300, isn't it?
At that time, it wasn't included, is it?
So in theory, HR support is more realistically 1500. I'm, is that, what? Yeah?
I'm happy with that.
Yeah, let's drop that to 1500 there.
I went back, you know.
But it's, it's, it's... IT or it? Maybe it's...
Sorry, that one confused me, because we moved over to a different company for our website and it's not really sure what...
IT covers everything, doesn't it? It covers Millennium, it covers the new website, IT as a whole, it's a...
We've left that for sale, because the situation at both of us, the tendering the case, it's going to be about all budgets.
We don't, on a budget, we don't split out who, because we don't go to subscriptions book now, silver, blah, blah, blah.
That would have been nice to notice. But that's been taken into account, we're using a new company.
Yeah, well, it's, I think the...
You don't say that for budget, but that's not...
I can't figure everything.
Yeah, yes, right, okay, so I think, so IT will, so up to this point here then, we're, okay, so we're going to, contracts and grants?
Ground maintenance contracts. We've increased that slightly again to allow for inflation.
So ground maintenance is increased to, for inflation, so Martin's going to say something?
Yeah, this was a big sticking point for me on the fact that we haven't tendered. And I use the word estimated, but what I find quite, I don't care about our word, odd, I'll say, is that we're actually publishing in the public domain, because once our website's up, we have to publish our budget. The fact that we're willing to pay more money, and as a councillor, I think we've got to start looking at...
Right, Martin?
...the revenue from money and not saying to these people every year, we're putting our budget up.
Right, Martin just said that.
If I was a company, I'd be looking at that and going, oh, they're going to want...
Not asking, you can't say that, this, we're setting a budget, we're not placing orders.
Yes, and this goes in the public domain. So when you go for a contract, you tender for the contract.
Right.
And it has nothing to do with the budget. Yes, but the figures are, they're showing that we're willing to budget more for it.
Hang on a minute, I'll stop you there, I'm going to stop you there, because at the end of the day, you have been the biggest voice in this town saying that transparency, people should know where their money's going, and now you want us to know?
No, we're not talking about hiding it, what I'm trying to, let me explain. What I'm saying is that when we tender for a contract, we should not be putting figures out there saying we are willing next year to pay more money. We haven't, we haven't...
Can I just finish? Yes, you can do that. Everybody, you said, want to stop a minute?
When I, when I, when I sat in this council, I think it was in June, and the office were asked to tender.
Martin, no, 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 I'm going to stop it now, because what it is, I said at the beginning, you've not hijacked the meeting, you've not gone on about it. We know your opinion, that Michael has already said that the £26,500 last year is allowed for the inflation. Now, what I'm going to do is that we do not have the time or luxury to go and debate, half an hour debates on each of these headings, and I'm going to...
Right, we're going to do it.
Well, we're not doing it, it's a toss. £26,000, no, £27,000 with the ground maintenance contract, who is happy with that figure? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. It'll be 20, it'll be 27,000.
One of the issues, what I'm trying to say is that we haven't tendered, we haven't tendered for the contracts.
I know, we've sent the budget.
For the contracts, we would know what to set the budget for.
Are we, right, are we tendering this year for these contracts, honestly?
We were asking for it to be tendered in June last year.
We postponed the tendering, we extended it, and it's going to be done this year. You know, I can't, I can't do anything more. Flora, flora.
We've left it as it is.
Yes.
And that's because that's already been agreed for the three-year thing with that, that's going to, we can't get away from that one. Open sanctuary maintenance?
Now, we're, the working group will produce a paper for the next meeting. But what we are, the working group is suggesting, is that, so at this stage, to keep the pre-set increase down, that we take this out of the budget, because we don't understand what the maintenance will be yet, because the contract is still being sold out. But we, if, and when we get involved with the sanctuary, we take this out of general reserves rather than budgeting for it now. Because we don't jump that boss.
But that's, we get that all day.
£20,000.
To make that a zero.
We claim this, we...
Right, so, does everybody agree with that, Peter?
Well, I was just going to make the observation that this year we should have a 10,000 under spending, because we've got 15,000 before we've had. And hopefully at the next meeting, the sanctuary report will come through. We've had a lot of discussion about this, and you'll see where we're getting to. But yes, we'll take it out and...
Is everybody comfortable with that? Quick show of hands, just to, yeah, I think, okay, thank you, let's whip that out. Let's not be able to the end and look at that percentage now. CCTV staying at zero, everybody happy with being zero?
Yes.
Don't control, don't control, because the government don't want them anymore. So... Citizens' proposal of 70,000 pounds. Anybody want to make any comments or observations? Peter?
Well, I would support this, I'm a great believer in citizens' advice. However, in view of our budget and the situation we're in, I just think it's on the other side. I would put a council proposal that we pay £20,000 a year.
Okay, well, I can't disagree with that. Now, let everybody else have a go, Martin first, because you've had your go.
I just put my hand up.
All right, okay, well, if you want to go to it, you can go. I did, I did some digging on this, because I am a CA rep now on the council, and I've spoken to Jane, I'll email about this, and I looked at their income in 2015 and their income in 2016. Their income is in excess of 250, their income is more than ours each year, for a start. Their wages bill in 2015 was £216,000. Their wages bill in 2016 was £265,000. Their reserves, something which members of this council have said, we should be spending our reserves and we shouldn't have such high reserves, their recommended reserves by their own committee should not exceed £135,000 in 2016. Their reserves, and this is their prospective reserves as well, which is to do with another organisation they partner with, which I'm not going to go into, but their reserves as a whole, not 135, they're £179,000. They're £34,000 over. Now, Jane was very open with me, she explained about restricted and the unrestricted reserves. She said to me that statistically, we're operating at a similar level to 2015. And the reason they keep their reserves so high is that in the event they have to do redundancies, that because they have 9.6 full-time paid staff, they have to have reserves for that. I also looked at how much money is contributed. Open Town Council has been a supporter of the CA, 3,000, 5,000, 5,000, 0, 0, and then 2,587 last year. Uppingham, 1,700, 1,500, 1,500, 0, 0, then 2,000 last year. Rutland County Council since 2011, zero. Other organisations, £4,000 up until 2013. And the RAF Benevolent Fund up until 2013 was also £14,500, over a period of about four years. To me, £7,000 in the game last year doesn't seem to be recognised on the website, I'm not bothered about that. I want to support them, I think £7,000 is too much, and I would support what Peter said there, that 2,000 pounds would be appropriate. Open and take the look, that's all. Start?
I support 2,000, I do feel we want to contribute something. And I think 2,000 pounds is a justified amount politically.
I would agree with you.
Right, okay, Martin? Do you want to?
Yeah, I don't, I think, I ask them what they want.
And they said that, okay.
And they say, whatever the council wants to give us.
Oh, you forgot, I know.
I have, they've got a, they've done a good job. And I support supporting them.
So 2,000 pounds?
But the only problem I have, Peter, is that we seem to have done this in the reverse. Like, I think we should have been able to bring an agenda item at the other meetings, so that...
Just because we've allocated 2,000 pounds, doesn't mean they're going to get it, yeah? Martin will kick the agenda like that, maybe, but something might happen between that and our... So that's, yeah. So, we changed it to 2,000 then? Toilet maintenance? 2,000, all right, thank you.
Next one. Toilet maintenance, we've left as it is.
Yeah, but that's, is that not living near to 1,000? That's a bad contract. That's a bad contract as well. It's going to be a busy year this year on contracts. Play, area inspections?
And we left it as it is.
Okay, okay, let's, next page.
Christmas decorations? We left it as it is.
Right, and obviously, this year here, when we get to the end of this year, that will be, that will be the three years complete. So at some point this year, we will be having to go out to tender, and I was going to be approaching, even though it's not my bag, I know everyone thinks I'm Mr Father Christmas, or something, but I'm not. All I do is I make sure that this town gets what they seem to want. But I will be pushing, I've identified some other companies that we will probably approach when we get to the tender point. And I will still be doing the liaison with the members of the public and what the Brooklyn Boys bunch. And we'll see if we can make sure we don't, you know, have any more forecasts. So 17,000, the actual installation is only about 11 or 12, isn't it? So potentially, there's money in there to purchase additional, all right?
Of course, with the 17,000, it's what we pay for them now.
No, no, the first year was 17,000, because we bought lights as well. Every year after that, it's been about 12.
So why was the expenditure last year? I think we paid them 17,000 last year.
Don't get me, do a cheque, aren't I? We'll do a cheque, Martin. Promotions of local work, oh, people, we only have given it for some... Everybody happy with 17,000?
I'm not happy, but...
Martin wants more.
We're in contracts, so we...
We can take the five out of the CA. Right. Next one is, for instance, PPWG, £10,500.
Can you tell me what that includes? Anything?
It's in the, it's in the paper.
No, there's something, there is some new voting. We've got some patches.
Yes, it does, it's in the, it's in the voting there. There's enough in there, Joyce, for voting.
I'm more concerned about 20 years in the...
We can, as we've still got money in the budget for this year, because I, myself and Hannah have got things that we want to buy, thanks to our budget as well.
Yep, and Martin, quick.
Yeah, well, I'm a bit confused, because that figure was what the council had read out at the last meeting of the paper. It has a figure which is missing, £1,000. But also, I'm trying to be quick, also, I did, Joyce, if the council leaders wants extra voting, I don't believe that that budget, unfortunately, at £500 is enough. As I think we spent a few hundred pounds on voting.
That's a good idea.
I think that was a girl on some...
Budget, it sits there, voting, hanging and removal.
Apparently it was a nice issue.
Can I just remind members, again, we are setting a budget, it's not placing orders. So even whatever budget this promotion's working through, that doesn't give them authority to stand and... They've got to bring their...
But I mean, the important thing is that the figure on this report is different from what's on there. I'm going to...
Are we going to understand?
I'm the fungus, we have a...
I'm going to ask this question, okay, so you have the £10,500 in the budget. Does everybody want to support for £10,500?
Yes, sorry.
Show of hands, 10,500? Obviously, don't forget, I'm not going to say it too many more times, but it's, it's not permission to spend it, it's just a... It's a bring thing.
Appetizing is left to say.
Appetizing is left to say, anybody got any problems? Planting and trees, choices, tree, plum, tree surgery?
I have no, I have no figure for the tree service. Say again?
£7,000.
For willow present and cuts.
I told Mike, and I'm back, he's supportive.
And roses?
You only asked the two reports, cuts and willow present.
Yes, but what about roses? And I've banged on about... And I banged on about Royce's tree that parts fell in. I have said that. Is that going to happen? Is that?
Not come out of this year's budget.
Right, so can we get it done then, please, can we have that minute?
The budget, did we? The roses, oh, we didn't have enough in the budget.
It was no, this was, then, then changed, it fell in, which wasn't really true.
Have we got enough money in the budget to have it fell this year? So, the Royce's tree.
In four May.
Yeah.
Right, can I have that minute, that, that work will be done, so I can get the P O D done.
Well, it can be, we can be getting agenda items requested now.
So we reduce it to seven thousand five hundred, so.
What?
This is for this coming year budget.
I would be probably better improving in view of the fact that you may need additional work in every construction.
Absolutely.
Be the same, to be fair.
We've got, we've got money issues, Martin.
Yeah, but if there's real work that needs to be carried out in Royce's, I would suggest, and I'm all but happy to put my head on the line that, we keep it at thirteen five. Because I do fear that real work needs to be done in close.
Right, Martin?
I'm agreeing with this, but I would have liked, I supported that figure just because that was what was put to council at the last meeting. But we've got trees falling down in, that's not an exaggeration. And I'm concerned that if we have these reports, which are gonna cost
Seven thousand pounds.
Seven thousand pounds of work, it's gonna be probably a lot of money. And I'm, I would have liked to have seen reports that were coming from the office of, of trees.
Thirteen thousand five hundred, we're looking for, for show, but Joyce is gonna say.
Can I just say that at that guest meeting that we had of, uh, tree surgery, uh, of men, of the budget last time, I said, three thousand, I wasn't far out, three thousand for, uh, uh, three thousand for old person. I wasn't far out, please, so let's get that right.
But if we're gonna put it right, we're not gonna have seven thousand five hundred, we have come. Because I'm not gonna be spoken to in certain ways by people, so.
I would suggest we leave it at thirteen five.
Right, so, I think once it has been thirteen thousand five hundred, go, 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 ones, one, two, three, four, five, okay, that's, that's, that's thirteen five.
Absolutely.
Additional maintenance is a catchall for anything else we need to maintain. Additional maintenance is a catchall for anything else that requires maintaining during the year. We've increased that, again, to, as more increase. We're all happy with that?
Everybody happy with the additional maintenance at seven thousand, any comments? No? Okay.
I don't think anyone disagreed with the Queen's ninetieth birthday then. We should have another ninety, for sure.
Yeah, which I had one, but.
Um, skate, skate park. Skate park. Skate. We're not, we're not bringing any extra, any extra.
No, 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 that's, that's, we extended.
Street and park furniture.
Street and park furniture, yeah, yeah.
Can I ask, does that include main, uh, the painting, the, the?
No, that would be under maintenance.
Oh, thank you. That, that includes.
This would be with, with additions and or replacements.
I was thinking, we should sign it as well.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, signage as well.
Seven thousand pounds.
Yeah, that is, no, street and park furniture.
And, and that was, so it's furniture and signage, which is street furniture, isn't it?
Is that the, is that the interpretive portion?
Yeah, yeah, anything.
Sorry. Anybody got any comments, options? No, are we happy to keep it at seven thousand?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, that's, that's one of the dots.
Again, with that, it's, it's not much has been spent this year, but we, the lack of any other information, we thought prudently as it is. And it is a budget, remember?
Yes.
Yeah, there have been some damage to the, to the repairs to the play equipment come out of that budget.
Well, this, this, this would be, this would be replacements, well, it could do it, it could, it could come out of that budget or it could come out of additional.
I, I believe, just on the sideline, in future, when we have a repair that has to be done like Cobblepole, it should start coming out of play equipment project and be highlighted as repair. Because we need to start identifying where money is being spent on council. So if we go play equipment, replacement, one thousand, repairs, two thousand. Because at the moment, general repairs are absorbing all the costs and expenses.
Because we expend more and more of the twenty pounds on that.
Exactly, yeah, well, it's been covered in the general maintenance budget. So we, that this year, when we get repairs, we probably do play equipment. So we've got four thousand, we'll leave it as that then, if everybody's happy. Late night shopping, and there's no paper on this, because historically, and mine's highlighted this on numerous occasions, I'm hard to agree. Is that late night shopping have come to us on the Oakham Township and asked for a thousand pounds. Um, and he said that we should have it highlighted and the council should vote on it. Now, unfortunately, the late night shopping people didn't, haven't produced the report yet. I think most of us agree that the event that went off this year, that the Oakham Township did, was a very good event. Lots of positive comments. We get a free slot in there, in theory, outside on the street when we do it. One thousand pounds to benefit the town. To me, I don't see as a big issue, I think it's quite small, if that's what we pay. So I'm not issued with leaving that in, but I'd rather they still submit their own report, just to find where they spent the money. So ring fence it on the budget, but I'd rather just give it to them.
Another, another just comment, is take it away, we don't call it late night shopping. And we call it a donation to Oakham Township for a year's sort of. Because on what people may not be aware of, we didn't pay a great deal of money for the publicity that we got. We got an A five lease leaflet with our logo on, and a lot of people gave the town council a lot of credit for very little work that the working group actually put into it that we got back. It was a forward-facing campaign that we got. We got a lot of credit, and I think a thousand pounds to them is a, a gesture to support all the events that we will be working in collaboration for this year is peanuts to the effect that we give to the town council.
Okay, Martin, come back on the phone.
Yeah, I, I, I was, I don't know if I'd like it to just be said as a general, but I think it, it, it should maybe just say Christmas event. And when I look at what Tesco is, if we're allowed to say brand names, gave it about two thousand pounds and they sponsored fireworks and all sorts of things. I'm not, I'm not sure that they will give the sponsorship this year because of their funding, but it would be nice. I've been shit without name, the sort of thing is if we, if they came to us and says, we need this payment for, and that's what I would like to see.
Are you happy with that? Or should, or should this town council like it to that? Or happy with that, just to just spend it now?
I personally feel a thousand pounds, what do you think?
Right, now I think a thousand. That's a pound, there's a quick show of hands, everybody happy with that? Right, I think, right, there's nothing on there, and, and we'll have to review how we pay it. Yeah.
They must have a reason, not just.
This is a budget, we don't, we don't need.
No, we're not, we're not, yeah, we'll leave a thousand pounds in there. Campus price, do you think? I mean, the town council give a cut or support of, of an award. It's known as the Oakham Sh, Sh, Council. Yeah. Oakham Town Council resilience hall or somewhere, or, or Walk for Resilience? Yeah, I'd do that.
It, it would be quite nice that, that if, if we are giving that, that and the town councils are invited, that we all get seats. Because I didn't get a seat.
No, you didn't.
I didn't get a seat with my husband then, and I wasn't going to be separated.
Okay, okay, um, anyway, so the, the issue is, is that I, I've put forward that the, an indicative value is a thousand, a hundred pounds. I believe that's that in previous years, they only had sixty five.
I, I know I've raised issues on this, but I, I have an issue of a hundred pounds, and that may seem a bit penny precious. But when we talk about the, the year before last year, they were saying sixty five pounds. And then you find out that the school said that that was too much money and they put it into school funds and early days.
Okay, so more should, should, should the campus prize giving me fifty?
There should be twenty quid, but I think it should be set at a hundred pounds and it gives us the flexibility through the next twelve months to allow whether we want to give additional prizes or not.
All right.
I'll, I'll repeat what you've been saying all night long, it's a budget.
Yeah, okay, so the main, it's not an amount really. But if it's a seven hundred pounds budget, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't have to spend it.
But the, the only reason I ask about the figures is because we're then asking the taxpayer to pay that.
We're not talking about spending it, we're just setting a budget.
I know, we're not spending it, but we, I'm saying, can we catch some of those figures? Because the end of the day, even if we don't spend it, we're asking the public to pay it.
We cut, we cut close footpath services into yours.
I said, I told you, it was capture this document, um, I had got a quote, uh, last year from a company, fully enough, called Brookside. All right? Um, and they, and, and this is the, and this was only to resurface, oh, sorry, to widen the path from Burley Rowne up to the junction of, just past that flood. And then, in fact, they quoted a figure of twelve thousand five hundred and fifty pounds.
And that's just that one footpath.
That's just.
What about the rest of the footpaths?
Well, that's, well, then the other footpath, well, the, the main footpath that goes through the centre from the corner of the old house all the way through the church passage isn't our footpath.
No, exactly.
So there's, I'm not also gonna pay for that personally.
No.
Um, and then the other footpath is a footpath that goes from the flood and up to Church Street, the one which goes at the slope with the benches on that picture, have you got that? Well, that one is our responsibility, and that is the one which is starting to crack and break up. Which is why, this, if this was twelve thousand five hundred and fifty for widening a path, which would take more work, but just skimming and re-topping wouldn't cost that amount of money. However, what it would incur, and I didn't realise this until I started reading a bit deeper, is that the, uh, you have to have these archaeology people to stand there for three hundred pounds a day. You have to get planning consent, you have to get consent from the, um. Monument consent order, so hence, I feel that we should earmark this, whatever, I said twenty five pounds? Nineteen, was it? Yeah, no, you can't, please, do you have?
I'm suggesting that that is actually reduced to zero. And that the nineteen thousand is taken out of the sixty two and a half thousand pounds that we've had from.
Yeah.
That's why I was thinking, we, 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 we take that from the sixty two and a half thousand pounds, which is sitting there.
Because the last year, when it was for the development and promotion of the town, it wasn't be helping to repair infrastructure. Okay, that's, I'm, I'm not wrong with that, as long as, the main concern for me is the public, if we're making a bound back. But we're just gonna come to Martin, then I'll come across the table with.
And my concern is the figure, I'm going to put it out in your figure, you read out, it's different from what's on my piece.
You're wrong, suppose we make it zero, Martin.
No, no, what, what I'm saying is that we need a reasonable figure put in there. I mean, we have a box which calculates the reserve spend.
No, because, because the sixty two and a half thousand pounds.
And that's our reserve.
It shows separately, it's a separate part.
But it will show that we budgeted more and then see that.
It won't, because it's not on the spreadsheet.
But it should be, because it's money, it's money that the council has.
We're putting it as next year's budget, we've already got that one.
A reserve is a, a reserve, over the road there, C A, they have, they have one part money, we're gonna keep that in case there's a problem. Now, what money do we need this year?
But on this spreadsheet, there was a thing that said.
We're looking at next year's budget.
From reserves, which then reduces the, the.
From gen, but the sixty two and a half thousand pounds is not shown in the general reserve. So we can reduce this.
We used to have the meeting, it wasn't, we earmarked.
I showed it, I, we've shown it separately, we'll get down that one.
Okay, when you're happy, we take it off.
I'm, I'm happy that if it comes off, but we can, we can access it from the sixty two and a half. Right, Rich, let's see, let's see what Rich has to say.
I, I, I'm not worried about it, but it has, I, I do thoroughly agree that this needs to be, my wife complains every time she happens through that. Um, as a matter of, of, of information, does that also include the big mud patch when you go out onto, onto Church Street? You know, when it's on the ball, it's, it's gonna go through there.
That's, that's, the mud patch is not strictly speaking our. I think that's, but there is actually a path, a tarmac path that joins it with the tarmac path, because I reviewed it and I'm thinking, I was thinking, oh, let's get someone to go out there so we can repair it, because we can put down the, um, a, a special, um, stolen gold gravel. So you don't put in a, yeah, which is what we get at Royce's. Um, but there is a path that does take it to.
Yeah, I'm wondering, so nobody uses it.
Well, I think we could do an alternative situation, um, Peter was gonna say.
Sort of pulling one from that, I don't agree with that, but looking at the figure, um, another approach would be to leave it there, but also put nineteen thousand as income as coming out of reserves, which is what we did last year. Last year, if you notice, we've got grants and donations of thirty two thousand, which, which was sixteen from the grants and sixteen from reserves. And then it still shows cuts close as being done.
I'm with you. That makes sense, that makes sense.
Sure.
Martin, happy with that?
Are you?
Okay, anybody else on this left side? Joyce?
Uh, I, I am concerned that it's a short, a stretch of footpath. And we shall be looking at the perimeter pass, and now that's one of the expenses.
That's one of the reasons I, again, I was looking at the in, impact one, the big one, I was looking at the one, the main thoroughfare. We've already followed it, the little one, and said, do not use.
It's very, but it's very dangerous because pushchairs or whatever can slide off down the bank if.
Well, I would, if I was honest, what I would want to do if time moved on, is, is remove the tarmac one on the bank completely. That, oh, that's what I'd rather do.
Can I just, can I just remind everybody that we have got a working group set up to look at this, so therefore, the figure, whether it, whichever pot it comes from is set, and it needs to be looked at, and we have a strategy that we put to the council. We deal with the matter in hand, which is set in the budget, so whether it's going from what or not, it's gonna be.
Absolutely.
Um, there might not be a word on this.
Can I recommend that figure that you've put on here, the twenty five thousand? If it's gonna be done in the way Peter said, which I was trying to put across, that it's showing that it's coming from reserves. And then the other point, which is just information, we are responsible for that path that was mentioned through the churchyard. And when the ballouts went up, Oakham School agreed, whilst we'd sorted it, but we haven't sorted it, to contribute towards whatever surface we wanted to put there, and then it just got left. So there is money to assist with that from Oakham School.
Do you know that?
Yeah, because I was one of the people who campaigned to get that sorted.
I might, I might be the paperwork, actually, I had, I had put it down there, twenty five k.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, but, but that's what, because I think it's gonna be a lot more.
So, so would, so would, so could that be twenty five k as a budget, but, but comes out of, but the income is shared completely from the reserve like Peter said?
I know.
And, Martin. Twins or something there. Is that unreasonable?
So, what's happening there?
We've increased that twenty five thousand, and when we take it out, it'll be sixty two and a half thousand, so we're going that far.
Right, okay.
Yes, fine, thank you.
What's the, everybody happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay, we've got no agreed capital projects.
No.
Public works loan board repayment remains the same.
Other expenses?
Other expenses, we're, we're, certainly, cats or, we reflect that as it is.
Okay, all right.
Chair's allowance.
Chair's allowance, that's unchanged, is anybody else on change, I don't know.
We, we, it was prudent to allow some money for elections, because we do have vacancies and, uh, the members of the public could, of course, and actually.
I don't think that figure will cover that, actually.
Last election, about four thousand pounds.
That's what I said, that was the council.
I, I would, um, I would say leave it as two thousand, but if somebody does call it and it's more, that comes out of reserves. I would say, yeah? But are we happy with that? That seems uncompromised, um. Freedom of entry, do we want another freedom of entry, anybody wanna? Back charges? Okay, yeah.
We've reduced asset maintenance down, because not have been spent on asset maintenance. We can't, we couldn't, we actually identified what we would be spending it on.
We did know assets would be looked at in March, so we're, um, actually annual event.
Okay. Right, okay, uh, neighbourhood plan?
We got the neighbourhood plan, which was, which was my paper.
Is that fourteen?
Yeah.
Thousand? Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the figure you want, because your report is quite contradictory, um.
Yeah, if that's the figure in the budget. Anybody's got any other comments or observations now, happy to lead that is, yeah?
Well, no, we are going to apply, but the, the problem I have with that is, could we not say that that comes out of reserves? Because what we're doing is a double taxation, because if we get grants, we're actually taking fourteen thousand pounds, it's almost like an insurance policy, and I don't believe we should be doing that. It's almost ninety nine point nine percent sure. It's almost ninety-nine point nine percent sure that we're going to get.
Grants only nine thousand pounds total in any place that we do get it.
But then there are other places you can get grants.
Okay, right, so, let, let's, neighborhood plan then, fourteen thousand pounds in the budget. Let me have a shout out quickly.
Leave it in.
Right, you're leaving it. Uh, the community lighting we've already committed to, so we can't change that one. Uh, youth services.
This is, this was yours.
Well, no, Vincent D'Elva's.
I don't know. I don't know, I've heard things, but I'd, I'd rather not comment on it.
Okay.
But I'd like to leave it to the public, because I'm not.
I'm going to.
I'm not sure what's going on.
Michael's going to say, are you in?
Somebody has been speaking about my proposal behind my back, that's all I'm saying. Because it's my proposal, it's not a lovely county, it's horrible in the land.
Okay, Michael, let's, let's see what.
Well, Alan Walters emailed both Adam and myself.
We didn't approach him.
We approached you, he emailed us. I think, well, I don't quite weigh that. Um, well, he, he is saying that he voted an idea, and that council brought it approached him on this idea, which I can't handle whatsoever. Um, but during the exchange of emails, um, two things, Alan has confirmed that he hasn't actually done a business plan. It is an idea, an untested idea that he has got at this stage. Um, working is a bit of confusion, is because a frequent information request to Rockland County Council, they have said, I'll read this paragraph out. The current drop-in youth club at Jules Hammers is running on Thursday evening. However, the service is reviewing its youth club provisions with the service users with a view to adopting a focused and themed rugby programme of support for young people, rather than an entirely open-house drop-in style sessions. Young people are being consulted about the issues affecting them and using this information to devise a six, to devise six weeks programme to offer informal education around these topics, such as online grooming, telephone emotional wellbeing, bullying, and disspoken advice and support, et cetera. These programmes will cover all age groups from year seven and be delivered in various venues across Rockland. So, um, I'm not sure whether Alan is actually aware of that, but actually, Rockland County Council are dealing with these dangers.
Um, and also, the cost of running a town club, because one of the things I, that was asked, sorry, when we got that document, asked the question, how much does it cost to run the youth club from a people's point of view? It equated to only, it was less than fifty-two weeks a year because of holidays and all that, came to about seven and a half thousand pounds. So, we both, and we did this without even communicating with each other, because we saw this thing from Alan, we wrote to apply back, thanked him for his time and effort, we accepted and appreciated the fact that it was an idea that he was floating and they hadn't come up with a firm business plan. And we said we'd be very open to discussing it in the future, and we liked the fact that he'd been engaging with the council already. But we've drawn the conclusion, I think, that, um.
It's not. We just want to try to raise issues about budgeting. I've been told Chris has not foregone to discuss the gender rights.
No.
And I, and I think what's been going on is not very good.
Well, it's just an occasion as to whether we should put it in the budget, because you.
You've just made a, a statement that you basically don't approve of.
No, I do, I do approve, I do approve, I do approve of the, of the youth club. I think that it is, then, I didn't realise there was a gap missing. But now, having seen the freedom of information request and having spoken to Alan, there actually, one thing it highlights is there isn't a gap. And, and that was the thing, and that's what's, and when actually you read more detail of what Alan was after, he was going to, he found a member of the public, or somebody was going to put in five hundred pounds. He was actually asking Open Town Council if they would match from that five hundred up to a thousand, so he could do a more in-depth business plan. So in the very earliest sense, the very most of this council would be looking at giving to any youth organisation would be councillor Walters's business plan to come up with a business plan, or is, is, so.
And I can not try and short circuit.
Can I withdraw it and just make it back? Because I'm not, I'm not happy, because it was my idea, I went to the Rockland County councillor, so can I withdraw it, please?
Okay, let me, let's see what Stan says first.
I've almost forgotten what to say. I'm sure you'll come up. To try and short circuit this, I think it should be removed, because it's such a time, as a business plan.
Well, the council wants us to read that.
Yeah, I agree with you.
It was written by Alan, not by you.
Yeah, and I have not, I have not said that it is by, I'm representing, I, I wanted to do something and this council to do something. And, and that is a role of the council to source things. But if people are now saying, he is saying it's his project and I've been put out of the loop, then I don't want to carry on with it.
Just like Peter said, let's have.
There was one thing we should, um.
Let's not be.
No, but if he comes back to me, it's going to be a problem, then I'll support it.
Some respect, Peter.
Yes, I, I agree, I mean, you said earlier on, bring it back, and I think this is what we should do. Because I've got some sympathy for it, we, we did work on this in, in Uppingham, but it is a big project, and dealing with young people, you've got to make sure you get it right. There's a lot of rules and regulations, and volunteers have got to be mattered. And in the past, we used to have proper youth workers operating out of the county. So it's a big, a big, big issue, and I don't think it's something we can just deal with.
Well, it's a big chunk of money as well, but if we reinvent it and don't spend it, then I don't want to get criticised by the.
But I would like, I would like the message that we have some sympathy.
Well, we, we've said this, haven't we, Michael, Tim, and Alan, so Joyce?
It's just that I have spoken to the young people going past my house. And I said, not today, simply from the paper. And, uh, most of them have, have said, when they've stopped going to the youth club at nine o'clock or whatever, they then go to the bus station and smoke and have a matter. Now, that is not our problem, that's a police problem, okay? I asked some under elevens today, they rang me up with the list that they would like the youth club to have. For table football, pool table, table tennis, drinks machine, bean bags and a music machine. Uh, I think, I, I personally think I have, I have misinterpreted what a youth club is all about. And, uh, I wrote on the eighteenth of December in my column about Exton children who, um, were busy raising money for a skateboard ramp. I find this incredible, to find youngsters prepared to, uh, take an active part and not wait for money to be given to them on a plate. I'm sorry, but it's just a minute, there's got to be some give and take on this. And not, let's have some of the youth telling us what they would like, and then, uh, we've done that. Oh, what is that? We've done that at Rice's Rec and that got out of hand. Yeah, Shannon Spencer will tell you that one.
Turn the twelve thousand out, because my, my six hundred.
Yes, I think.
That's it. All I wanted to say was that I don't want everybody to think I'm against you.
No.
No, no, that's, let's explain, in my past, I have run youth, I have run youth, um, particularly with sport over three counties. So I'm very much for it, but it's got to be done properly, because Peter says there is so much involved. Uh, if you're going to work with youngsters, you've got to get at least certain people, you've got to be.
Certainly, I think, I think this is what Alan's been getting toward us.
Alan, Alan, yeah, Alan understands, no, Alan accepts his head, good on him, it's a good idea, good idea now. But it, he hasn't thought it through yet, it's not a business plan, and at the same time, we find that the county have their own plans in place to deal with it, the problem which is identified.
Right, I'm going to say something, because I'll do a bit, send Richard down across.
And I suggest that instead of taking it to zero, we put it at two grand. Again, it's a budget. Should we need to allocate funds later this year, we have no caveat to do it. If we have two grand that we don't spend, then we won't allocate it next year.
I, I would, I would, I would say that in fact, we're going on what Alan had put in his paper, if the council was mindful to want to leave the budget in, he was looking for max funding on five hundred pounds.
Yeah, so.
So maybe do, maybe like five hundred.
Well, yes, five hundred, two thousand gives us.
That shows to Alan that we are serious about all this work.
Yes.
Then, because he might come to us in a couple of months and go, right, I'm going to do this and come and catch up with that, and we might all then go, which we've put five hundred pounds.
Not very many.
Martin, it's a budget, it's not. What is, let's see what people think, you know, five hundred pounds in the budget, in case Alan does want to.
I don't think they have to put five hundred pounds in. Because we were supportive of the work.
We want to see a business plan. Okay, let's see what Richard has to say.
Well, I, I was in education for forty years, and so I do understand how difficult it is setting these things up and covering all the bases you need to cover, and it will cost a lot of money if it's going to be done properly. But we haven't yet seen anything, I don't think, which we can put money towards. But we must say that, that we support the idea of.
Absolutely, there. Uh, Martin?
One of my ideas, that, yeah, I am a bit annoyed that people have gone ahead and some reason discussed with Alan, and we've come to this conclusion that we have nothing now. Now, I wanted to bring this as an agenda right thing, I'm not going to now, because basically, I agree as well that it's torn apart from what you've got there, the, the, the council going to do it. But I'm puzzled to know why I wasn't told this before, because people put a lot of work into this.
Do you have any other?
I know, but, but also the fact that nobody from this council told me, as a member of the council, that they were going and investigating what was going on, I didn't know the context of Alan's things. Then you all knew that it was my agenda right.
We can't, we can't, we can't stop Alan contacting us by email.
He contacted us that.
But when you're making decisions to do things, you should consult the person whose idea it is.
Well, that was ours.
No, it was my idea, I approached him, and I don't say that means I.
You should have written the paper.
Sorry?
You should have written the paper. Okay, let's, I was just, the assistant partner said, shall we move on, just about a point, so, I'm not going to ignore what Big said. I'm going to say, do, do we need to put anything at all in this budget or not? So do we want any money in it?
Disappointing.
So yes, money or not money, so.
I think we should.
No. Yes, well, pretty answer, you want money in the budget, a five hundred pounds, one to five hundred pounds.
Five hundred pounds.
If it was more than that, you would struggle, wouldn't you? One, two, three, four, pull those against it, one, two, I'll be against it, three. Are you, you're against it, so that's four, so it's, comes down to the chairman's decision.
I'll argue against it.
Oh, well, in that case, one is counted, it's zero budget then. If Alan comes back.
We're coming, we're coming.
We're going to, please move.
Yeah, we're going to move on, so we're taking that down to zero, um, right, income.
We have to have an E from there. So the.